All right, it is 3:00 PM. What is it, Wednesday evening, December the 4th? And we'll bring this workshop to order. Let the record show Commissioner Dwayne Johnson, Danny Chambers, and Wade Bush are all present. All right, Adina, we've got Ann Carver, Kelly Harris, damn, Owen Brink, Kristen, and I apologize.
Tracy Brown.
Tracy, I hear the name of once, Tracy Brown. All right, so I don't know who's gonna want to ask questions, who's gonna lead off here, Adina, but you've got the floor.
Well, I wanted to say, first of all, I'm so sorry I'm not sitting in the room with you guys. It was really great to get the invitation to come, and I am extremely disappointed that I'm not eyeballing the eyeball with you, and I hope this still helps you with what your goals are as we work together. But, thank you everybody for showing up. It's really, really great when you guys support programs that are happening in your county.
We do appreciate your input also.
Adina?
So, I...
Uh-huh. I was just gonna say, as you know, we're just an interview as far as tourism and the rest of that's not developed as part of the county. I just kinda wanted you to tell them what you did, because you're like the state guru of county things.
Well, there's not that many of us, Kelly, in our business in the county level, so that helps us be, you'd be maybe the second guru in the state, then if that's the case.
Boy, I think you're...
You know, and I'm really proud of my county and yours for doing this, because I think we've had our program for seven years, and it's funded, the tourism side of it is funded through hot tax, the county hot tax that we collect, and then I get about forty-four thousand dollars from general funds. So, I don't have a lot of money, I have a lot of things I want to do with it, but I think the county program can make a difference, because in my opinion, we can be kind of an umbrella over everything that's going on. In the case of Bastrop County, we have three cities. We have Bastrop, Elgin, and Smithville, and each has their own program, but then our county program kind of pulls those together, and we work as an entity together to do some things we couldn't do independently.
Okay, listen, I sent you the program that I gave you. You wanna start out on the film friendly hospitality? I did go to the seminar, so now I'm on the floor where we have to fill out all the, send in the forms and programs.
Right.
Explain that to us as far as how it works with the county, and prison here for the food, or how it works in the city, stand for. Hey, Adina?
Hey, how are you?
Good, good.
I just feel awful not being able to see you guys. So, we really, really believe in the economic development of tourism that's associated with the film business, and one of those cities, Smithville, was the first city to be film friendly certified, and I think now there's like a hundred and thirty-some on. The Texas Film Commission doesn't have a county certification, and we have city certifications, but I'm pushing them really hard to do a county certification, so we'll try to be first, and y'all can try to be second. But, I think that each of our cities has kind of their own policy, their own way that they handle their film projects, but you guys have a beautiful courthouse, and you have so much beautiful area and unique area around you, that I think, you know, you have the potential to get some of that business your way. It's like gambling, you know, you can do all the work of planting a crop, you can plant the crop and do everything you're supposed to do and not get anything to grow, you know? And so, it's a lot of work and maybe sometimes not any reward, but it's work that unifies your team together. I mean, I can call, you know, a police chief, or a sheriff, or, you know, a public works guy, and they understand what the film work is about and why they want to support it. So, we've had a bunch of meetings, just kind of explaining why the film industry is important and why we're gonna go after it, and we've worked really hard to have property owners kinda understand it. You're never gonna get a hundred percent of the people that want it there, you know, some people are never gonna want a street block, they don't care what the reason is and what it does for the rest of the community. But, you know, you guys understand how that works. It's, you know, you make it as comfortable for as many people as you possibly can, and then sometimes you just have to go. But, we've had literally hundreds of productions in Bastrop County because of it. I think because of your proximity to the Dallas market, you guys have the same kind of relationship potential that we have with the Austin market. They can't film everything they want to film in Dallas, they need rural areas, they need places like us. And, so, it's good, you know, Fort Worth has gotten really aggressive in their film program, which is also good for you, because again, they can't film it all in Fort Worth, so they got, those scouts are gonna be looking all over the place for the things that they want.
So, are you certified through Bastrop City, or what?
Uh, my program is technically not certified. The three cities are certified in my county, but we're not. As a county, there's no certification to get. But, the forms that Kelly gave, gave in the packet, are the ones that our court has approved for us to use on the county level to authorize filming on county property or county roadways, county buildings or county roadways. And, the things I would stress about them is that we require law enforcement to be with them at all times. We require a certificate of insurance, and our law enforcement loves it, because we base this as extra overtime work for them. I mean, the film company pays them directly, they hire them directly, and so it's bonus money for our chef's department and our local police department.
If there's equipment, I'm sorry, if there's equipment used such as cars, or trucks, or fire equipment, things like that, do they pay you extra for the equipment?
Yes, sir, they do.
All right.
It's all that's negotiated.
Yeah.
All that's negotiated. You don't have to give away anything for free. The smaller the budget, the film, the more generous you are in what you allow them to do for free, but if it costs us time and money, then that's a cost they bear.
Okay.
So, the city and the county can set up a fee structure based on what it is that they're meaning, but the private property owners, they would do their own negotiating for their property?
That's correct. I never get involved with that, other than we have trained them, that it's not just one guy with the camera coming into their business or their home, it's a bunch of people with a bunch of equipment, and it invades it, because the worst thing to have is somebody not really understanding that it's a mob, you know, the circus coming to town. And, you know, they negotiate their own way, we just also encourage them to be sure they have certificate of insurance made out to them. And if it's a legitimate film production company, whether it be an ad, or a full feature movie, or a TV show, whatever it is, they're gonna be able to get a hold of insurance. If they can't, you don't want to do business with them.
Okay. And, so, through all your cities, and you as the county, y'all have photographs on the Texas Film Commission website for different places?
We do. We do. And they don't always want your pretty places, I mean, they need crack houses, they need, you have jails, you have hospitals, you know, it's not all our pretty historic homes and pretty green parks, I mean, they need, everything you ever see in a movie is what they need. And so, you know, we tend to be proud of our pretty places, but sometimes that's really not what they're looking for. They're looking for everything that we have. Anything that you have that's unique, especially if you have something that's vintage, you know, some kind of period thing, they love that. Old rundown motels, I mean, things that we consider blight are sometimes exactly what they're looking for.
Okay.
They love diners, almost every film has a jail or a hospital in it, I think, it's crazy.
We've got an old jail, the original jail there, here, from the eighteen hundreds.
They love that kind of stuff. So, you know, if you could have somebody spend some time taking pictures and getting that sent to the film commission, they do a really good job of cataloging that. So, if somebody says, "We need an old jail," they'll, they can catalog it, and they can pull up their old jails and send it to them, and it's pretty amazing how they can get that information out.
Okay.
If you guys get even the slightest bit aggressive with your film promotion, the location scouts will come out and look around. They'll end up, I have location scouts that know more about Bastrop County than I do, and I'm a native. They'll call me about some country road out in the middle of nowhere that I didn't even know the little cabin existed out there, you know, and they get on Google, and they get on all kinds of devices and figure out what's out there, and they...
We've already had certain film companies in the county filming that, or the property owners out here have, looks like an old western town called Nimas, they've done several films out there, and they've partnered with Sue Land over in Hightower, she's got a lot of producers. We're doing, I'd like to send you an invitation, we're doing a red carpet movie premiere here, February fourteenth.
Yeah.
And so, that's kind of an angle that we're working at. We've got several producers coming to, interested in bringing more of their movie premieres here, if we can get some going on good.
Well, the large red tape you have for them on your governmental side, the easier it's gonna be. Like, the forms that we have, if they fill those out and return them to me, then all I have to do is, I have to get my judge, my DA, my auditor, and whoever's facility it is, if it's, you know, a courtroom, or, you know, whatever the facility is, I need to get that person that's in charge of that particular facility to sign off on it. We don't have to go to court. That's, what happens is, these projects have short time sleeps, and they may call you on a Monday and want to film on a Thursday, and you can tell them no. I mean, that's certainly something you can do, but if you have the capacity to react quickly, it's gonna help you grow your industry.
Okay.
You know, they have moving targets, they have to get everybody on that production company on the same page at the same time, then they have to have the weather, you know, work with them, and it's pretty complicated. It's a fascinating business. That, the, you know, when I got to the county, you had to go to court in order to get approval to do filming on any of our properties, while our commissioners meet every other week. So, you could be thirteen days away from getting an approval from us, which often is too long.
Yeah, it looks like, did y'all go to court, looks like they made, which maybe you, the county tourism coordinator, looks like they made you the authority manager where you can manage all the Bastrop County facilities, and you just go back and get the signatures?
That's correct.
Well, that's good.
I just get, but I can't do it by myself.
Right.
I have to get approval, I have to send that packet to four people and get their approval. So, it's not me by myself, but it doesn't require an action of the whole court.
Cool.
Yeah. It makes, it makes for a pretty fast turnaround for us, you know, because the folks that I have to send it to, you know, they'll respond pretty quickly for me, and so it, we can turn it around pretty quickly.
Is that all in touch?
We have four hundred people in the county today filming a TV show for Amazon called Panic, and what I say to these projects, whether it's a three-man crew or a four-hundred-person crew, I want everything they can possibly buy in Bastrop County. I want everything they can possibly use in Bastrop County, you know, whether it's gas, or groceries, or food, or, you know, whatever it is, I want them to make every effort to buy it in Bastrop County, and I'm not bashful about saying that to them.
Well, one of the film companies we've had, they ordered a hundred and fifty hamburgers.
Yeah, they'll do that. They'll do that.
All right, you may ask them to take some more down?
I think the couple I've got is probably for Suzie and Brian after this, but don't need to waste Adina's time on that. Do y'all have anything at all you'd like to ask, Adina?
My question would be, what doesn't apply to this? I mean, obviously, if a business owner's wanting to shoot a commercial of his business, they don't have to go through this.
No, that's right. Anything on private property, we don't have anything to do with.
But sometimes you see like a political advertisement, they're wanting to shoot in front of the courthouse, or something, would that include this?
Um, yeah.
That's property?
Yes, anything, anything that they do on our property would have to be, go through our process.
Okay, but that, and then I did see an hour where you said any production that was less than five hours was exempt, didn't I read that?
Exempt from payment.
Okay. But still needs to go through the process?
That's correct.
Okay.
We encourage them in our county buildings also to film after hours, so that, I mean, our goal is not to be as less of distraction and disruption to normal business, and it, honestly, it's not so much the citizens as it is the employees. The employees get distracted when you have some of these, you know, like Matthew McConaughey or whoever happens to be, you know, in the building, they want to be watching that instead of doing their work. So, you know, for the large production companies, waiving the fees isn't such a big deal, but for smaller production companies, they'll try really hard to accommodate that. Plus, actually, they can work faster when the building isn't in use at all.
All right, thank you.
All right, Adina, let's move on to the hot tax portion, please. Oh, wait, I have more questions. On your logo, Film Hospitality Capital of Texas, what is that, the screen logo of now?
I did, we went to the state legislature, had our state rep and our state senator carry that for us, and got ourselves designated in this last session as the Film Hospitality Capital of Texas, and then we just created that logo ourselves.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you. It was, it was kind of fun to do.
I bet.
If you guys haven't designated, you know, y'all should be designated as Donna's for Capital of Texas. Y'all should be some kind of...
We are yours.
Are you, well, there you go.
We were designated.
You're ahead of me. You're ahead of me.
Bluegrass Capital, Moonshine Capital. Picky Point, the girl.
It doesn't hurt, does it?
No, not at all.
I must've drank too much of it.
Yeah. Okay.
Make those reps and senators earn their keep.
Okay, on your hot tax thing?
Uh-huh.
I see you sent us a really nice form, are you ever seeing it? No, but my people would probably adjust to that. I heard it was pretty simple, so I liked the term like that, but one of the very simple things. All right, well, can you explain to me what you were talking about, about the county hot tax?
Right, well, ours is, ours is a little more complicated than maybe, and unfortunately, I think I only sent you the one located in the county but outside of City of Bastrop, Elgin, or their ETJs, because we have, the City of Bastrop has an ETJ that's like gigantic, it's a voluntary ETJ. They went out twenty years ago and got a bunch of people to voluntarily sign to be in their ETJ, because Austin, City of Austin was creeping into Bastrop County, and so if you want to be in City of Austin's ETJ or Bastrop's ETJ, and people signed up pretty readily to be in Bastrop's ETJ, because it doesn't cost them any tax money or anything. And, so, but what turned around and kind of bit the county in the, on the thing was, then if you're a city of under thirty-five thousand in population, and you have a lodging property inside your ETJ, then that hot tax is paid, hot tax is collected by the city. So, the seven percent of, as an example, the Hyatt Lost Times, which is our huge, huge resort, it's our biggest thing that we have in Bastrop County, is inside the City of Bastrop's ETJ. So, the City of Bastrop gets seven percent on that property, and Bastrop County gets point seven five. So, they get two point four million dollars annually in hot tax from a property that's about ten miles from their city limits.
Wow. So, is that point seven five of the seven percent, or point seven five is ten additional?
It's on top. It's on top. So, their total is six to the state, seven to the city, and point seven five to the county.
Sorry to bother you, but didn't I read where there was like a fifteen percent maximum to be charged on the, you know?
That's correct.
So, why just a point seven five instead of two percent? If the city's getting seven, the county's getting, uh, state's getting six, that's thirteen.
Right. When I, if I had it to do over, I would probably have pushed a little harder on the point seven five. What we were trying to make sure we did was that we kept the Hyatt competitive to their competition for large groups. And in the seven years since we've been doing this, everybody else has gone up, so I'll probably go back at the next legislative session and try to get ours bumped up a little bit, because I think I've left some money on the table, because I, you know, I haven't increased it in seven years. At the time, we were trying with thirteen point seven five was where we felt we could be in total and keep them competitive on large group business.
Would that affect us being the small county versus where you're at?
No, sir, I don't think so. Uh-uh. You know, you're, they were competing against, you know, large group business coming in, so, you know, you just have to work. I'd better have point seven five or something than two percent or nothing, you know? And at the time, you know, we just wanted to kind of make it as comfortable as we could and stay competitive.
So, what are you thinking about going, like, one or something, or what? One percent, or what?
I honestly haven't, I honestly haven't really thought about it. If I'm gonna do it, I don't want to, I don't want to step it, you know, every two years. I want to, I'll probably take a big bite, and maybe take it on up to, you know, two percent or something, one point two five.
What process did you go through, Adina, to get that done? Because I notice it had to go through the legislature and...
Yeah, I'd have to go back to the legislature again, and, you know, I'd probably hold meetings with all my lodging properties and explain to them why, you know, I'd have to have some pretty good numbers for, to justify wanting them to do that, even though they don't pay it. You guys know, everybody thinks they do, and so, you know, I'd want to be able to have some pretty strong ideas for, you know, what I wanted to do with that extra money, just like you have to justify with every budget. But, that's kind of what I think I'm gonna try to do.
Did you go through THLA, or did you just go straight through your legislature?
No, everything I do with regards to that, I go through THLA, which is Scott Joslow, is the executive director. I always run things like that through Scott, just because he has a really good sense. In fact, he was the one that told us that, you know, we needed to stay, you know, competitive. I also, just so you'll know, one of the things that I do, we do every year with our hot funds, is we purchase a membership for every lodging property that submits hot tax to us at the county. We purchase a membership for them in the THLA.
We do that for everything in the state.
That's the Texas Hotel, you know, Texas Hotel Lodging Association, that puts them on the state database, the state website, it also gives them free legal counsel, and they get updates on things like, you know, guns, you know, what can you legally do and not do as far as people wanting to bring guns onto your property. You know, they get, they can get all kinds of questions like that answered, and they get, anytime there's a legislative update that changes the law for lodging, especially in compliance with ADA and stuff like that, they get notification of that.
Yeah, we need the county to do that, this is our second year to do that, for all county and city hotels being...
See, you guys, y'all have it going on. Y'all have it going on.
Thank you, Adina.
You're doing it, you're doing it. Because I really think that, first of all, that pays back every property for the effort that they have to do in order to collect that, because it is extra work for them, you know, it's not just flicking a button, I mean, they have to, they have to do some stuff to collect that money on our behalf, and so that way I was sure, as you are, that every property got something in return for being on the team, you know, with the, with the hog.
Okay, I had THLA come up and do a seminar for all of our hoteliers and B2Bs, and Kristen and I have had issues with the Airbnb's not paying their hot tax, because, you know, they'll go to the BRBO, and they'll collect the state taxes and send to the state, but we don't always know who they are operating in our county or our city, and...
I know, it's, it's an issue for everybody, and if I had the solution to the problem, I would, I would be standing on top of the mountain telling everybody, because it's, everybody's got them, and what, what's sad about it is, these people are gonna end up getting in trouble legally, because, you know, a lot of them don't have their businesses set aside from their personal property, you know, they haven't established LLCs, they just throw up a sign and go into business, and, you know, they've got some liability that is pretty wide open.
Well, it's what we're doing.
And, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's our job to protect them, because, I mean, you know, they're, they're own property owners, but I think the more we can do to educate these people, the, the better it is, you know, I consider it kind of a public service that we do. It's not so much about the money, because most of these guys that are just fringe operators aren't doing that much business, but, you know, it's just, it's not fair to the ones that collect and contribute to have a guy next door operating that doesn't, and so...
One thing we did find out through THLA is that Corpus Christi and Houston have now backed up with THLA itself, forcing the Airbnb to charge for the local...
Enforce the...
Enforce, excuse me, enforce the local hotel tax as well, for now they're collecting it for the state, now they're collecting it for the local, and four percent in Houston. So, we're talking about...
That's correct, but when you, when you do that, Kelly?
Yeah.
You, you never are given the identity of the property. If you're, if you're looking... If you'll, if you'll look at how it registers on the state comptroller's site, it'll just list Airbnb, Airbnb, Airbnb. It doesn't give you the address of the property. It doesn't give you any kind of contact information.
But my other being is, I know where a lot of them are, so. Yeah, and if you go on their website, you can kind of, oh, God. No, apparently, this is something that's on the red. Airbnb itself, the corporation, is having to go through now. And for Corpus and for Houston, Airbnb has to collect the local taxes and turn it in just like they did the state. Well, they're entering?
That's correct. Plano, Plano has signed on with the program and Conroe has signed on with the program. THLA does not recommend that you do that. Um, but it is, it is one way to get the money. And there's also third-party companies that will do it for you, but they charge a pretty high percentage. It's funny, my treasurer and I, my treasurer auditor and I just had this conversation yesterday because we haven't solved the problem. Um, and, um, we're getting more aggressive in trying to find them. I mean, sometimes if they're inside our cities, you just recognize the house. From the picture on Airbnb, you, you recognize the house, or you, you know the name of the host. But it's really hard to get the addresses if you don't recognize them or have some connection to them.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know Neil sort of put through THLA. But the main thing about that was that if you did decide to go and do that, that you would agree to this, uh, not hold those ready back to, you know, full back taxes that start from there forward, which?
That's correct.
Kind of like you said earlier.
And I don't, I don't think we have the authority to, to, to excuse somebody from paying taxes, in my opinion. That's just my humble opinion, but.
I believe that's true.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I don't know how they're, I don't know how, on a county level, I, it may be different on a city level, but on a county level, you know, I'm, I'm not, boy, my, my taxes have to be the most popular person in the world if she could just tell people, oh, never mind, you know? Yeah, it just doesn't work that way. So, um, yeah. So it's an ongoing problem. It's going to get bigger. And it hurts our hotels. It hurts our hotels because people are staying. It hurts our legitimate properties that are, you know, being a part of the team when we have these guys that, you know, they, they have cute little places. Some of them are wonderful and some of them are horrible. And, you know, it's, it's a crapshoot as to, I don't know why I said crapshoot, but it's a, you know, it's, you don't know what you're going to get, you know?
You're among friends, you are.
Adina, this is Kristen. Um, now, we actually agree with Airbnb or any of these hosting sites, we can't go after the site for the back taxes, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we're agreeing we can't go after the property owner for said back taxes. Is that?
No, you're saying you can't go after the, anybody for the back taxes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And, and it would be the, it would be the easy, it would be the most, it would be the easy way out, I think. Uh, and that's what the comptroller, that's what the comptroller agreed to. I mean, the comptroller did that. So the state of Texas has agreed not to collect, um, back. Um, so, you know, I, I, I talked to, you know, PAC or somebody, one of those attorneys, before I, you know, before I committed to doing anything. But it's a problem. And you, you know, as great a spot as you guys are, you've got a lot of people out there doing it.
Oh, yeah, we do.
And that's just, and it's going to get bigger and more, you know. People are doing backhouses on purpose and, you know, all that sort of stuff. So it's, it's a problem. And, you know, the thing is, I want to, part of what I know you guys want to do and, and I want to do is, I want to welcome those people into, into business, you know? I want to help them. I want to promote their properties. I want to make sure their guests have information about things to do and places to go. And, you know, I want to, you know, I want to welcome them to Bastrop County. And you can't do that if they're invisible, um, if you don't know who they are and where they are. So, you know, that's part of the problem. You know, everybody, it, I've, I've done presentations to groups of realtors and, and I've said, raise your hand if you've ever sold a piece of property or a home to somebody that came to Bastrop County as a tourist. And about, you know, seventy-five to eighty percent of them raised their hands because, you know, these people that come out and visit you guys, you know, if, if you treat them right, you know, if they, if they have a good time and they feel welcome and, you know, they're going to be in taxpayers for you. And, um, you know, we all want that. We all want, we want controlled but nice growth. And, um, and, you know, that, that's one of the things I think tourism does. I think it, it makes people feel welcome in your, in your part of the world.
Yeah, and then they come here and want change back. Sorry.
I want to bubble like they do.
Does anybody else have anything to ask, Adina?
Questions, problems, concerns?
So once a month, we do something called Best, Bastrop, Elgin, Snowfield, Texas. This was started about twenty-four years ago by a county judge who thought we were all too competitive with each other. We weren't working as a team, and she wanted us to be a better team. So once a month, we gather for breakfast. It's the county judge and the commissioner whose precinct we're in, and we rotate the precinct. It's the, um, the city, the mayors, the city managers, the chambers, uh, it's the EDC, it's the school fit with attendance, and the tax, um, assessor, no, the appraisal district. And did I say chambers of commerce? And, um, whoever can come, come. Whoever the city's hosting it picks up the tab. Um, and it's been the best thing that we've ever done. This county hotel occupancy tax that we have actually came out of that because the three chambers started marketing together. And we, then we went to the county and asked them for a little money. And then the next thing you know, we're thinking, this is kind of fun. We want to do more of this. And so that's how we started looking for ways to get a revenue stream coming in that would help us market. I don't do, we don't do any grants to any organizations from our county hot funds. Nobody can apply to, to use any of our funding. All of it goes collectively to marketing. And that way, we don't have to get into situations where we gave X to Y and Y to Z and, and that, it just doesn't become political. And I think that's how we talked our judge and commissioners into doing it, you know, kind of promising them that we wouldn't make it something they had to worry about. And, um, like I say, it's, we've been doing it for seven years and so far, they haven't run me out of town, so I guess we're okay. But I, I strongly recommend this Best Breakfast. I mean, you guys could get somebody to sponsor it for you, you know, your rural utility or, you know, your water company or somebody if you wanted to. But we don't invite any outsiders in the room. It's only those people that are in those positions. And we've had some really frank and candid conversations about issues. Um, it's really been great. It's a little harder in football season because, because there's a little, there's a little competition still in football. But, but, um, you know, otherwise, we tend to kind of, kind of work together. Helps us with going to a tech doc. I guess you guys are the North Central COGS. You know, helps us when we want to apply for grants with the COGS or things like that, that, you know, we can use at the county level. Um, it really helps. We sign off on each other's stuff all the time, trying to make sure, you know, what's good for one is good for everybody. So that's kind of the philosophy that we take with that.
All right. Adina, thank you. We appreciate you doing this.
Thank you very much, Adina.
Hopefully, I'll see you soon.
Kelly, make sure everybody has my contact information. Anybody wants to talk to me personally or ask another question, please feel free to do so.
Okay, we'll do it.
Let me know if you ever come to Bastrop County.
Don't worry, I'll be down there.
All right. Take care.
Thank you, Adina. Appreciate it. You need to go over there at three thirty?
Ah, sure. You got to be a point number.
Come in. Okay. See you on break. It's up to you, man. I'm going to say don't let us get into your business. Hey, Brian.
What I was going to ask, and I know I should know this, but I don't. On hot tax right now, out in the county?
A lot of our money is.
We getting seven percent off of the bed and breakfast? Is that what's coming in? So what she was talking about on the other proceedings is we're just in ETJ, right? Because in ETJ, this, they're paying?
They're paying the city.
The city, the state, and then that little bit that they tacked on for the county.
It looks, it looks like, it looks like by this resolution that the, what's through the legislature?
We should get two, up to two.
But it was city also. And?
Was it?
Yes.
Because the city and ETJ, that, that didn't come to the bond.
And she, that's why I was asking her too. So she's going to go out and get back and ask for the two percent. So if we're going to do this, we need to ask for the two percent.
Right out of the gate. I agree.
Yeah. And as we all know, it gets passed on to the consumer, but I know that they'll question, because that's where all our hotels lie, is in the city, the hotels, and then a few bed and breakfasts. But there's more bed and breakfasts in ETA, ETJ than there is inside city limits.
Because they're, in fact, because they're wanting to use that proximity selling point.
So that's something for us to think about. And because we're going to present this, well, I understand that we have presented 2021, right? We got to take it to the legislature to get it discussed before it comes back to us. So we do have time to prepare it.
We have to get THLA to work into it.
And then we got to talk to all the owners and, because we just want to bounce it on them one day in court. Talk to the owners and say, hey, this is what this county's looking at doing. Okay.
Well, hopefully I'll sell that information to them.
Yeah. I like the information she sent you because it even helps clarify a few things.
It's nice to talk to somebody when you're talking to them all the time. They're from the city. You know, they all, they don't know what the county can do, but she's from the county, so.
She knows, yeah. She's on our side, at her level.
It's obvious that our startup is probably just where they're at.
Yeah.
We know what they're doing. But they don't back up at all.
And then we can make adjustments from that point on.
Because some things that we've started were right in line of what they're doing. And we just got to continue on down that path.
Yes.
Well, any other questions or comments or problems or issues before we officially adjourn and turn the recorder off? Well, do I have most adjourned this workshop?
Go ahead.
I have most.
You have a second?
I have a second. All in favor, three, four, zero against.